I forgot your last name. Which?
Clark.
I remember your name.
Mike Clark.
Clark, okay. Let's see, which one's Clark?
Twelve.
Okay, so Mr. Mescher Schmidt is before him, right?
Yes. Mescher Schmidt is thirteen.
Oh, okay, well then, all right. So typically, we take it in the order of on the agenda, but if people are here, we'll take them first, so.
There's also people on Zoom.
Oh, there are people on Zoom, too. All right, well then, I guess we'll just do it in order. All right, number four, Cipriani, forty-four De Rocher Terrace. This is an application for a five-foot side yard variance for the, on both sides for a deck, for an existing deck. Anybody have any comments on this one?
No comments, seems pretty straightforward.
Then I would make, I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Doesn't appear like it would have any impact on the neighborhood. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible to the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. There's no other way to do other than to remove the deck. Whether requested variance is substantial in terms of numeric, numerically, it's, I suppose, substantial, but does not appear based upon the situation with the house to be, have a substantial impact. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, I do not see any impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Second.
Unless someone has any comments about those findings. Do you want to add anything, or?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for the, for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries five-zero. Next is forty Honey, Honey Lane. This is an application for a four-foot side yard setback for a screened-in porch and landing. Any comments on this one? Any concerns? Then, you know, actually, with the exception of number five, where it is self-created, well, actually, I would, I would just accept the applicant's findings. I think that they cover everything.
Second.
Art, do you mind making a motion?
Sure. Okay, number five. I move that the board appro, approve the request for an area variance set forth in item five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair, which were-
Applicant.
Applicant. Was included with the application, so moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion about this one? All right, then all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right, any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries five-zero. Next is number six, Six Phyllis Road. This is an application for an eight-foot variance for a front yard deck. Any comments on this one? Any concerns?
Very, very normal for the neighborhood type lots.
So I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It appears to be consistent with other neighbors or other properties in the neighborhood, so I don't believe there's any undesirable change. There's no other method, there's no other way to produce what the applicant is looking for without an area variance. And it's not substantial as it doesn't, as it actually is pretty much in conformity with what's existing there now. And whether it have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood, I don't see any of that. And while it is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
In that, in that case, I move to, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in number, item number six. It's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered by the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board accepts the findings set forth by me, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next is number seven. This is a special use permit for an accessory apartment. Anthony and Laura Pacoan at twenty-two Keller House Drive. Any comments on this one?
It meets the criteria, right, though, for a footage of a fall?
Yep.
One bedroom.
I think that they described how the entrance to the apartment would, would happen. The requirements are that, you know, it has to be well-marked for emergency services purposes. I move that the ZB, ZBA find there's no other interested or involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Phyllis?
Aye.
Sorry, okay. That motion carries. I move that the ZBA find that the granting of the application for a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment in a single-family residence would not have an adverse effect on the environment and therefore issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Phyllis? Yeah, I have a note that says. Phyllis is frozen. And that's four, so say, we'll say four-zero with one, one abstention, I guess. In that case, Tony, do you mind making a motion? Phyllis, are you back?
Yeah, I can hear Tony now.
There is a staff report. Tony, can, can you hear us?
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the request with special. Do you want me to go ahead?
Please.
Oh, okay. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application. Testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code. And also, as a result of the recommendations in the staff report provided. And so moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Phyllis?
Aye.
Okay, then that motion carries five-zero. Next is number eight, Ryan Franklin, forty-nine Pleasant Lane. This is an application for a front yard fence greater than three and a half feet. The request is for a six-foot-high fence in the front yard. Any, any discussion about this one? Any concerns?
None here.
None.
Okay, then I'd offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be created in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This fence, although technically under our code is in the front yard, is more reasonably considered to be in the side yard. It is replacing some vegetation and a tree line that was there, so I don't believe there's any change, undesirable change in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method that's feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. I suppose he could put in some mature growth plantings, but that's, I don't believe is feasible. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is in the nature that no fences of this size are not allowed in the front yard, but again, this is this is more commonly described as a side or backyard. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
I'll move.
All right, any discussion? Phyllis, do you mind making an, a, a motion?
Not at all. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. Decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries five-zero. Number nine, we adjourn till ten nineteen. Next is number ten, Hector Lopez at one living South Gate Drive. This is an application for variance for an accessory structure which requires a side yard, side yard area variance of two feet, seven inches. Any discussion on this one?
I for one, not really fond of it. He gave us kind of a halfway answer that COVID negated him from getting a permit, which I don't quite understand. But I think it's, you know, it doesn't meet the rules, the regulations.
It's very hard to hear, Art. Can you go closer to a microphone?
I can.
Thank you.
I was just saying that, you know, he, he blamed COVID on his reason for not getting a building, or zoning approval. And again, we know that the town hall was open for most of the time via phone or online. And it doesn't meet, it's too high, it doesn't meet our, our codes for that particular structure.
No, no, that's, if it were eight feet high, it would only have to be six feet from the side yard line. So it has to be at least ten feet. So that's what he was looking.
Not a question of the height of this, the, the height of the structure only comes in if the, if we were talking about trying to get within the smaller shed that's allowed to be closer, so this is simply an accessory structure that's allowed to be, the requirement is it's supposed to be ten feet from the property line and it's not. So it's not the height of the structure, it's the distance from the property line.
Okay.
I guess, I guess my concerns are sort of what Art said, you know, I, this kind of thing, do you, do you beg forgiveness or ask permission? And, you know, I don't know what the reasons were that they, they didn't find out the rules. There, there seems to have been a lot of work done in the backyard and around that house where I'm sure they, you know, would have been prudent in finding out what can and can't be done. You know, he mentioned, well, the smoke is not a problem. Possibly the smoke never was a problem before because there was never a roof, so to speak, over the grill, which might have mitigated a smoke problem for the neighbor. I'm not opposed to working something out with them, and I think the neighbor was pretty forthcoming in saying, hey, you know, privacy's an issue and the smoke seems to be a problem, and that might be because of the overhang. So I think if we were going to approve this, this variance, that we would want to consider the neighbor and from the pictures, I, I think privacy fence from the level of the deck, six feet from the level of the deck up. So that would take care of the neighbor's concern as to where that fence was located, and that should provide him with the amount of privacy. The length, I'm not sure what the length should be, I guess that would have to be determined. But I, I would be more prone to grant the variance in thinking that would keep everybody as happy as possible with that six-foot privacy fence to be part of the approval process.
Christine?
I'm done.
I'm not sure where they would put a privacy fence, right on top of the wall, in front of the, in front of that wrought iron fence?
Right.
So that's what the neighbors would be looking at, would be, they'd be looking at a six-foot fence and then the applicant would be able to see their.
Right, according, that's what Tony's looking for, right?
And that's what the neighbor indicated would satisfy him.
Okay, Phyllis, any comments?
I think that, I think the land is a real problem. I think if everybody's happy with the fence that Tony is talking about, that's the middle ground, the the applicant seemed to be happy to put the fence up, the neighbor seemed to need the, be happy with the fence, but I think the primary problem is, is the land. It's the sloping. And I'm, I'm kind of.
Phyllis?
I think what we're doing is we're just.
I'm kind of, Christine, I'm not sure where the fence is going to go in my mind, but if everybody, you know, if that's what would solve the problem.
All right, well, I would remind the board that the application before us is simply for an accessory structure. So all the comments and concerns about privacy and, and smoke, with the exception of the, the theory from Tony that the smoke is caused by the, by the roof, none of those are really relevant to, to the application. The, the emails from the neighbor about parties and noise are irrelevant to our consideration for the accessory structure. So while I appreciate everyone attempting to make everybody happy, I, I'm not so sure there's a, there's a relationship between a privacy fence and the accessory shed. Unless anyone disagrees with it.
And as I suggested, I, I was just trying to understand why all of a sudden smoke was an issue when it hasn't been for twenty years. And, and the only thing I could come up with is, and I'm just, you know, I'm just expanding, I'm trying to think of, you know, what's going on. If there's something keeping smoke from going up, maybe it goes out, you know, and, but I, I agree, we're not talking about grills, we're not talking about anything, and, and I don't think the variance is unreasonable. The variance request is unreasonable.
Yeah, I'm not so sure if the, if the shed, if the accessory structure was movable and moved over three feet, how that would change any, any of the concerns. In fact, I'm surprised it's not moved as close as it can be to the wall, but.
Right. Based on, based on the application itself and just without overthinking this thing, I see no adverse effect.
Right, I think any of the concerns that were, that the neighbor brought up about noise and smoke, those are, those are problems that are not before us at, at this, or not before us.
Neighborly concerns, neighborly concerns and to be worked out amongst each other.
Lisa, am I correcting any of my analysis?
Yeah, I think that's generally right. The only point that arguably would be before, be before the board is, as Tony points out, if putting a roof over the grill somehow changes the smoke, and if the board decides that that's something that they would want to address in some way. But in general, privacy, noise, parties, et cetera, are, as Phyllis points out, largely a result of topography more than anything else.
Okay, in, in that case, does anybody have any other thoughts? Okay, and I, and I do recognize, Art, you're the position where people look for rather than, what is it?
Ask forgiveness.
Yeah, they look for forgiveness rather than permission. I don't know that's a basis that we can penalize people under. We can scowl at them, but I, I think that's all we can do. So in that regard, then, I would offer these findings. I would offer these findings, then, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area, variance. I don't see any detriment to the character of the neighborhood. First of all, it's, although you can see the top of it from the roadway, certainly the neighbor can see it along with the whole rest of the property, so I don't see any undesirable change in the character of the entire neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought for the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, since this is, appears to be permanently attached, I don't think that there's any other feasible method other than an area variance. Whether the area variance is substantial, it's not particularly substantial, it's only a few feet. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. That one, it's, while it's possible, I suppose, that assuming the neighbor is correct, that the smoke problem only happened after the erection of the accessory structure, then it would have an impact on the physical and viable conditions in the neighbor, but not necessarily the neighborhood or district. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a basis to deny the variance. And therefore, I offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making a, a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Any discussions? Oh, I'm sorry, second? I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? You can say whatever you want.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Not, not really.
We haven't voted yet, say what, you know, make your pitch.
There's really no pitch, it's just that, it's just that, excuse me, it's just that we're seeing more and more of these, oh, I didn't knows. And then they come after the fact, and, you know, it's, it's just getting worse and worse. And I don't know what we can do about it if we don't do something at some point.
Well, I suppose one thing could be a change in the, in the fee structure for people who are either prospective, looking for a variance, or something to create it. For instance, let's say you only have to pay, you want to do, you have a project and you only want to, and you, and you recognize that you require a variance, and you pay whatever fee that is, and you, and you make your application, you either get your variance or you don't. But if it's to correct the problem that you created, then perhaps the fee, or, you know, there's been a violation, the fee can be greater. I think that would be one way.
How would you do that after the fact, though?
Well, certainly, some people make their application for, for a, an appeal for variance based upon either a project they want to do or a project that's already been done. So if it's their fault, because there's been an enforcement action, maybe the fee could be a different, could be different.
That's more of a, that sounds like more of a fine defeat, if it's after the fact, correct?
Right, but I don't know, it can change our analysis, whether.
I understand that, but just, I'm just saying this is proliferating.
But I think, no, I agree, I think it's, I, I think people are, are doing that, and then if they get.
Bolder and bolder because their neighbor did it and nothing happened.
But I don't think that we can, I don't think that we can do anything about that, I think that's something the town board can do to address that issue if they find it something they need to address.
I submit a piece.
Okay. All right, so there was a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That's a nay, right?
Nay.
Okay. Tony?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that, one, two, that passes four-zero. Four-one, I'm sorry, four-one.
Four-one.
Next is eleven, that was adjourned till October nineteenth. Next is number twelve. A pool for Joseph and Mary Ann Clark, one-two Jordan Street. This is an application for a pool to be located in a front yard fifteen feet from the property line. Any comments on this one?
None here, no other place to put it.
Right, there's between, between the hill and the dry well, there is no place else to put it. It's already shielded by the fence that's there, and again, it's a corner lot, so. Okay, any? Any other comments, Tony or Phyllis?
Nope.
I don't think there's any place else to put it. Simple.
Okay. Then I would make I make these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It doesn't appear that they will have any impact on the neighborhood as it's secluded both by the fence and the topography. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, there is, there is no other way to do it other than an area variance based upon, again, the topography and the situation of a corner lot. With the area, requested area variance substantial, it's substantial in the sense that it's not allowed in a front yard, but based upon the fact that this is a corner lot, I don't believe that that's an impact. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, I don't believe there's any impact on the neighborhood or district. And the difficulty was, of course, self-created. That's not a reason to deny the application. And I offer those findings.
Second.
All right. Who's up? You?
I just did.
Yeah.
We're on number...
It's number 12.
I move that, I move that the board approve the request for, for an area variance set forth in item 12. This decision is based on a review, a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings those set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries five zero. And next is number thirteen. Number 13. Had it out of order here. This is a special use permit for an accessory apartment. I move that the ZBA find there are no other interested or involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency. Is there, second? Okay. All those in favor by, signify by aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? All right, that carries. And I move that the ZBA find that the granting of the application for a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment in a single-family residence would not have an adverse effect on the environment, and therefore issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Phyllis?
Aye. I said aye, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That, that passes. So it appears that the application, based upon the testimony of the applicant and our review, it meets all the criteria. So...
Yeah, the questions in the staff report, I think, were answered.
So I, I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number 13. It's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report, and that it meets the criteria set for the town code. There is a, I would, the board, the staff report, and the staff report, okay. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Nope.
So let me ask the zoning administrator.
Yes, hi.
Hi, how are you tonight? I think our code requires periodic inspections of the accessory apartments.
Yes. Yep. Every two years.
Okay. Can you tell, can that be done?
Um, yeah, I can definitely schedule that. Um, I mean, it hasn't been done too much in the past, I don't believe, at least not for quite some time, but I am, you know, getting my list together and going to start going out on some of these accessory apartments that have been done and haven't had inspections. Like, they're supposed to be inspected every two years from zoning, fire, and building.
Okay. Great. Lisa, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, how do you ensure when you do your inspections, what evidence do you look for that is owner-occupied?
I mean, that's a good question. I guess we would just, I mean, we would have to, I don't know, I'll have to look into that.
I know in the past, we've used driver's license because utility bills don't always help if someone's renting it out and the utility bills are in their name anyway. But yeah, that's been one of our problems. I'm not that it's related to this particular application in any event, but we have had some that we believe were going to be commercially, you know, both places rented out. I didn't mean to put you...
Okay. No, I know, I know. In the past, when I've done inspections for other municipalities, I've, I've always met the homeowner there. So I mean, I'm really, that was my proof, I suppose, but...
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Did we vote on that one?
We did not vote yet.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries five zero. Next is number 14. This is, this is 5 Main Street. A request for a variance. An eight-foot front yard setback. So a 22-foot front yard setback variance and a side yard setback variance of five feet required for the replacement of an existing screened-in porch. Any, any comments on this one?
Whatever, you're trapped by the lot size.
Yeah, it's...
Do anything without permit, a variance.
All right, then, then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. I don't see any changes that would be a detriment to the nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than an area variance, there's, there's no way to do that without an area variance to satisfy the applicant's desires. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, although it appears numerically that it is, this is really just a slight increase in what's already there, including on the side yards setbacks. And whether the, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse or effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or, or district, I don't see any, any adverse impacts on either of those. And although it's self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I offer those findings.
Second. Second.
Okay. So Tony, do you mind, or any discussions? Okay. Tony, do you mind doing a motion?
Sure. Let's see, this is number 14. I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number 14. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by the board members in approving this variance. The board adopts the finding. Amen.
What, what was the last part?
Amen. Well, nobody said anything. It's set forth by the chair.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right. Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries five zero. Next is item number 15. Susan Zabo, 96 Colburn Drive. This is for a pool to be located in the front yard. Any comments on this one? You know, based upon the area itself, it's, first of all, the property is elevated from the roadway. It's screened by vegetation, and I think that this is, based upon the size of the pool, it's a corner lot, she doesn't have any other alternatives, and I think it's necessary for her physical health, so. I think the benefit to the applicant is certainly outweighed by any, any impact on the environment. Okay. Then I would offer, anybody else have any comments on this one? All right, then I would offer these. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. I don't see any undesirable change as it's shielded both by the topography and the natural vegetation. Whether the benefit by the, sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible other than an area variance, there's no other place to put this, and based upon the fact that it's a corner lot, requires this area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is in the sense that pools are not allowed in the front yard, but again, this is a corner lot, well-shielded both by vegetation and topography. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Other, other properties in the neighborhood have pools, and so there'll be no adverse effect there. And the difficulty is self-created, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I offer those findings.
Second.
Phyllis, do you mind doing a motion?
Not at all. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number...
15?
15. 15. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Tony?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Nope.
All right, then, that passes five zero. Next is item 16. Brian Burke, 13 Vanderwater Avenue. This is an application for a new building which requires a front yard setback, variance of 10 feet, and two side yard setbacks of 17 feet and 11 feet respectively. Any comments on this one?
No, it's basically a replacement house, something that was already there.
I mean, the lot's 40 feet wide, there's no...
Not much you can do with that plot of land.
No.
And I can't, yeah, and, you know, what they're proposing has got to be a definite improvement over, I'd, I'd rather have somebody living next door to me in that lot, not have it vacant, than have it be a invitation for dumping and what have you, right? I think they're doing the best they can do with a limited amount of space.
Okay. In that case, I'll make, I'll propose these findings. Actually, I would accept the applicant's findings, with the exception of number five, as it is self-created, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And so I would offer those as findings. Who's up? Phyllis, do you mind making a motion?
Nope, not at all. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance in item number 16. This test, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the applicant. So moved.
Second.
All right, I would just amend that. Number five of the applicant's findings, just be amended that it actually is self-created.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Okay. There's one final item. Stewart Shop again is before the planning board, and they would just look to make sure that we have our continued consent for them to be lead agency. So I would make a motion that the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals maintains its continued consent for the planning board to be lead agency on the Stewart's matter.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 All right, any opposed? And that passes five zero, and then I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. Any, any comments? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Bye, Christine.
Good night.